Eji Mafa, pretty baby
Ah ha, I'm married child
Come and see Eji Mafa
I beg you be aware of her
Eji Mafa with her problem
Ah ha, I'm married child
Eji Mafa na flented to her bush
I beg you be aware of her
Na who go come Eji Mafa
Ah ha, I'm married child
Na who go show her love
I beg you be aware of her
Eji Mafa on the move One woman and several to her bush Hehe, there is service here There is service
Oma, what there?
Uh, how can it ringing? Uh, still ringing
Is this still ringing?
Yes, but she is not picking Oma, let me call it now We need, take it off, take it off
Try your own now
Take it off That's one left, the whole net has left
Your own
I have a bar here, eh
Is it ringing?
We need you, take it off I don't
Be trying your own now
I'm trying too Let me carry you up
Why you?
Lift me up Put your hand there, na ba onu Let me my father Let me my father
Let me call now
I'm calling now
Yes, baby
Carry me up wherever there is
Carry what?
I don't want to stop If I stop, not call again Sorry, call
You pick it
I pick it How do you keep it here? Nda na, no cow
Take off now
Or swear he Nda na, na Call
Try this thing
These village people, stop now Stop now, this is too much This is harassment to Do I say corner, easy by force This is too much, Rico, what is it? Let there be peace
Nothing
She's ringing
Okay, it's ringing
What is it? Ta no no, ta no no
Ta no no, qua
What is ta no no? It is not picking now See, climb here now
Wait, 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 I have installation
You, climb Do something How no jifon, na nebeere, I can do something, raise it up She has one, two, three, she has feet One, two, three, she has feet One Ta no no, ta no no Is it that Eji Mafa is not picking? Or is the phone that is not picking? I don't understand Maybe the phone is not ringing in that city, it's only ringing in this
No, I think it is not picking
I've even changed my mind about coming to that village So just rest Rest Hello, village woman, organi, what is it?
Yes, it is we, your sisters oh We are here
Uh huh Okay, so
Eh, Aboma and Chuma are here with me
Where is here? You are all where?
Papa's house in the village now
Our village house?
Trimo What happened? Did your husband suck all of you the same time? Oh, you did not shave that thing between your legs Is that the problem?
Eh, Eji Mafa If we go no, did us the current You are not current anymore
You don't know anything happening in our house again
Tomorrow is Papa's 70 years birthday We plan to do him a surprise eh, birthdays
So we came to do him the surprise birthday And Papa said we should tell you to come and be part of
That surprise birthday by tomorrow, he wants to see you too
Charu, charu, charu Papa's birthday is tomorrow And you want to give him a surprise
And he already knows So where is the surprise now?
Are you dead fools? How can you be that foolish?
Okay, just wait, so You people are planning a surprise with the person you want to surprise
Does it make sense? Hi! So you must still have blockhead, you don't have sense at all
Hello Hello, eh, Eji Mafa This is Aboma
Eh, yeah Puntus Puntus pilots How far?
Eji Mafa So you are still calling me this name? Anyway, we are fine, I am fine oh
Eh, hey, what eh Aboma is trying to tell you is that
We did not plan notifying Our father before coming But we told him And he's happy about it And he said
He would like to see you You understand what we are saying?
That he would like to see you So you have to try and come, oh, try and come Chuma is here, speak to Chuma, say hello to him
Eh, Eji Mafa, what name? Ototo Oma, good morning
Onugobo Colanote mat That is your own name, Abby
If you don't go qua, you started oh I'm no longer Onugoro I no longer eat Colanote, let me go more upgrade
Now you sabi Now you sabi that one Whether you still eat Colanote oh, or you don't eat Colanote You are my Onugoro for life
In fact
It's a gor Colanote tit I think that one fits you better
Eji Eji
You are coming, Abby
Eh, you know now So we are seeing you small, eh, Abby
I will come Oh, wait, oh, you put think I will not come, I will come
In fact, yesterday I was on my way to
Eh, but I nearly had a crash So I gently turned back
Sorry oh Ndo o
Well If Papa is turning 70 Of course I will be there
I will be there That one, for sure
Eh, but I will only come on one condition See, this one is eh, between us sisters oh I don't want you people to come there
With your husband and your children to intimidate my life
Eh, yes, I'm not married I don't have my own children But I will consider it an affront If you people come there with your husband and your children to intimidate me, I will not agree Agreed?
Agreed We will not intimidate you with our husband Oh? You no go, magenata
And your children
Oh, you won't bring your children too
Swear
Swear
Swear with that thing That you give your husband every night That thing Between your legs And makes you women
Swear with that thing you give your husband in the night That thing that makes you a woman Is women Woman, woman It no pa wa si, woman, woman All women It's volleyball All women
Okay I'll be there tomorrow Expect me Nwane Wogo Bye
He's coming He's coming He's coming tomorrow
You like it?
I love this one
That is how they will be carrying you From one lap to the other Any man that comes around You will dump the pussy Oh baby And then you will crawl into his laps Continue Continue Until they finish everything And you won't have anything left for your future husband In fact From today Your name is now lap to lap Lap to lap Nigerian limited That is what you are Is it that these people don't have work? Eh? Are there This idol all the time? This early morning that everybody that has sense Is getting ready To go out and hustle like a normal human being These two otchins are here Playing Cats and lizard love Love oh Ok na ngwala In there, you are dropless This is what they do, every day oh Day in, day out, in fact, since this boy They do this every morning, and the moment she come back in the night Badam, maybe look at me half I am suspecting this boy Bam, this boy is a suspect Bam, this boy Is a bandit A burglar Badam A digno In fact, this boy is a criminal A hardened criminal that is just lying low A very green snake That's what you are
Baby Paul
My love
I know you are not a criminal You are not a bandit And I know you love me so much
I love it, Oma
I know Don't we have the right to display our love anywhere we like? How police started arresting people in law?
No, my love
I don't know Kiss me, baby
What you just said now Is referring to me And what I just said Bero You are mad You are very stupid Now let me educate you Police And town council workers like myself With the authority conferred or not by the executive governor of this state We have that right To arrest anybody that we feel is constituted a nuisance In this town And right now I put it to you and this kangaroo That both of you have been a nuisance to me To everybody in this town And to everybody in this town have been all Let me ask you something Have you not heard of that word? Decency? You don't know what it means?
Eh, officer in charge The last time I checked I am in my house
Yes
I am not in your space
Really?
Yes
Oh, then feel free Take off your clothes
Yes Take off your clothes
Lie down and open your legs wide And let this fool mount you Since you feel that you have sense Since you feel that the reason that you are being stupid Is because you are in front of your house that you rented
Now what? This one that is very serious and wants to marry me They want to chase me away from me
I will marry
Why?
I will marry you
I thought you will marry me, baby I love you too
Wait Did you just say The word Marry Don't try that again Don't say that word in my presence again Because if you try it I will deal with you, in fact, I will arrest you I will I will Crush you What? Marriage is an abomination to my ears I will kill you
Who is she?
The commander of town council security for this area She and police, the five and six Even governor self, no am
And she's living here?
Ask me
Why not the government creatures?
Ask them
Are you sabi oh If you like make you make a vex
No, by the way, what's biting her?
Let me suppose, ask that question For, ask yourself that question
What I know is that I will marry you I will marry you and come more hand I love you, baby I will feed you, baby My No, baby, don't worry She would choke She would choke I love you, baby, it's love
I'll be traveling to my village tomorrow And I'll be going with the official truck Do you have any objections to that? Well I don't expect any form of objection Because You are my juniors in this office So I don't expect any Well, moving forward What this means is that tomorrow You will be going to walk With your two left legs Yes You will track Which is actually a very good thing Because you will now have the opportunity To put into practice What you have been learning all this while on the training grounds Oh yes So You will go out there And you will chase Those illegal operators and criminals of transportation With your legs And you will catch them With your hands After all That is what they were created for So Do you have anything to say?
Madam Is that a good idea? Using leg, ordinary leg to pursue those criminals?
Mama, we are task force officers oh We are not hunters
You're mad Are you asking me a question? Do they meant Something that wrong with you? Are you mad? Come, come Who told you they are criminals? Now let me ask her Who told you they are criminals? Is it because I called them criminals and it's that I want to intimidate them? Eh, guys, listen Those people are just like you and you Yes They are just looking for what to eat by all means So they are out there Looking for their baby bread Looking for money by all means You should be thanking God You should be thanking God because you would have been the same Oh yes If not for this task force job You You would have been a native doctor in your village Tying the destinies of innocent young men And you
Yeah, I've been in the city
The way I'm looking at you, of course you be in the city As an Amoaba Because the way I look at you That is your color Just thank God for this job And you're here calling them criminals Rubbish Don't open your useless mouth to call them criminals Unless you have caught them in the act Or you have a very useful information Criminal information about them Then you can step forward with your information Give it to us and then we hand them over to the police Okay? Anyway I have said my piece So Any more useless talk From the useless mouths of you useless fools Who don't have common sense Why are you looking at me? Why are you looking at me? Do you have common sense? Am I telling you, do you have common sense? In the absence of any useless talk You have my permission to fall out You are dismissed
We should go
No Swing Come on, leave the thing up here I will look like men Look at them
You like it?
I love this one
That is the kind of That is the kind of Kind of love I deserve Eh, that is the kind of love I need The kind of love I need in my life Just to have a man To myself Just sit on me and slaps Sit on me and slaps Shit my pockets After a while, I shit them You hold You hold me You kiss me Hey Eji Mafa, what are you thinking? Chaka no le weta, you see? Eji Mafa What are you thinking? What are you thinking? Do I have time? I don't have time for such nonsense I don't have time for such frivolities It is not for a strong woman like me No, 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 no Shit man It's not for me No But I'm thinking about it On my next meeting Whoever is in this file Is better pray Because when I catch you
I thank you everybody For coming to support my birthday And I wanted along the line to give you a piece of advice The only way you can live long By keeping this hand straight You see, my age now advance But I see young people, young girls who are dying premature What is the reason? It's something What God has said do, you do You don't do what the other man, certain You know You know certain wa la odo That odo wa to tell you run away from him Imagine how we look at you when you have a tail walking
Papa, I'm enjoying this surprise birthday party
Happy birthday to you once again Thank you very much
Happy birthday
Thank you very much
Papa, in fact, you will live long and you will keep living
I'm not meant to die Eh, the people that have pity cough Are those who construct coffin They will never see me in their shade For me, they will go hungry I'm not meant to die I'm going to beat the record of Mathusela How come you do it? Me that I'm having for myself is that I don't want to go into bearing children again Children are heavy, heavy work This one will go to primary school, university This one eh, mahdo You can enjoy yourself Anything you want to do is my birthday No economy Everything will be overflowing Eh, my children are well to do My husband, my son and sons-in-law are well to do How rough and ever I can hear water to have a balloon so Go on Have fun Enjoy it I can see you There was a news they gave me from your place that you've been going hungry So I said come today and eat But we have our number in case, so we will get our number Look at him He looks like a human flesh Enjoy it please Eh, enjoy, please.